Palm Beach County Planning Commission meeting for July 11th to order, please. Precious, could we have a roll call?
Yes. Carr, Erwin Ferris.
Here.
John Carr.
Here.
Rafael Clemente.
Here.
Verissa Laudos.
Present.
Rosie Matos. Richard Dunn. Glenn Gromen. Brian Stenberg. Rick Stopek.
Yes.
Gary Brown. Encore Patel. Stephen Basor. Denise Williams. Serge De Haiti.
Present.
Selena Semios.
Present.
One, two, three, four, five, six. Three, four, five, six, seven. Is that seven? You got eight? Okay. Their core.
Great, thank you. I'm gonna have my new vice chair, Verissa, lead us into the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Do we have proof of publication, please?
Yes, sir, we do.
Thank you so much. Do we have any postponements on the agenda?
No, sir.
All right, and go to approval for that. We'll also have considerate, probably need to do that separate. So, do we have the agenda approval? Approved?
We need a motion and...
Yeah.
A motion approval of the agenda.
Thank you.
Second.
Got that, Precious? Anyone opposed? All right. That's approved. Consideration of our minutes, did everyone have a chance to take a look at the minutes?
Moved to accept the minutes as submitted.
Second.
Great, thank you. And, call it the vote. All those in favor? Great. No one opposed? All right. Didn't see any comment cards on, on non-agenda items, is that correct? Didn't see anything? Nope. Okay. Just comments by the chair, just want to welcome, we have some new commissioners up here with us today, so welcome. We'll give you each an opportunity for a few minutes at the end where it says, "Commission Member Comments," to just tell us a little bit about yourself, what district you're in, and, you know, why you'd like to serve here. And that's really it. Welcome, everyone, we're excited to have you onboard. Okay. Going on to the public hearing, we have small-scale amendments for the Boca Raton Commerce Center. I believe we have the applicant to give a presentation.
Yes, good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners Josh Nichols, Wishmitt Nichols, agent for Thank you for having us this morning. This is relating to Boca Raton Commerce Two, and this is a small-scale land use amendment.
I don't think we can hear you.
Oh, it's not?
Well...
See, try to lean over. Is that good?
That's better, thank you.
We can hear you? Good, good. All right, so, again, Josh Nichols, Smith Nichols, and this is Boca Raton Commerce Center Two. So, kind of a quick context of what we'll be going through, just to start off with the site location, so this is just south of Glades Road, along Boca Rio Road. It's about 4.79 acres. We have an existing use on the property, which is professional office, and the south portion of the property is currently vacant. It was approved, and we'll go through some of those details of the previous approvals, but it's also currently zoned as multiple-use plan development. So, again, here's just a, kind of a zoomed-in view, you can see the, some of the surroundings, which we'll get into, as well as subject site. Site access is from 210, sorry, 210th Street South, and that is a private easement that does connect past the self-storage facility and connects to Boca Rio Road. So, this is the current future land use map. So, as you can see, we're surrounded on the east, south, by industrial, so that's all industrial uses. There's actually a concrete plant, you have self-storage, post office facility distribution in there, and some other, kind of ancillary industrial uses and warehousing and things. Subject site is currently commercial low office with an underlying industrial. So, that industrial that we have as an underlying actually is abutting, as you can see, the existing residential. So, we're trying to modify that and create some transition as you get to the residential. So, the proposed future land use takes off that industrial piece, as I mentioned, and replaces that with HR-12. And the proposed use would keep the, the professional office. Actually, the, the previous owner had a family office in there, and he did a lot of philanthropy throughout the county. He since has aged out and sold the property, but it's a really nice little office, it has a nice cafeteria and everything, but it's, it's basically mostly vacant right now, but is filling up. So, we're proposing 89 units in a multifamily development on the south portion of the property. So, again, here's the formal request, and that's to change from CLO IND to CLO Underlying 12, and for 89 units, and we'll kind of show you, I know we don't, we shouldn't be getting into some of the site planning aspects, but for you to get context of what we're proposing, we will go into some of that. But 89 units, you can see there are kind of a breakdown of the, the base units, the TDRs, and then the workforce housing bonus. So, after all is said, 25% of those units will be workforce-level housing, and that's required as a condition of approval as well. This is the site plan of record, so you can see the existing office building there will remain with all the parking, and then we would be developing out the south portion. So, just to give you a quick run-through of some of the history, so it was approved in 2010 with CL and IND with conditions. You can see that also the zoning side, same thing, kind of followed suit. And then there was a, in 2020, there was actually a small scale that was withdrawn, as well as 2022. Both of those were, one was a concrete living facility, and the other one was residential. They never made it to a public hearing, they just, finances didn't work out, and they, so both of those got withdrawn. And then the property was sold to the current owner in 2023. Kind of going through some of the application history and just showing you our, our work that we've done with the community, and I'm hoping that's maybe why we don't have many people in the crowd here, and we're still working with them today. But, in February of 2024, we officially submitted the property, or the project in March, was our initial submittal, obviously, to zoning, and that was for a five and six-story building. So, we were at 63 feet in height and 71 feet at height, and, and when we first started, with a parking waiver of 14%. Working through staff in, in the DRO agencies, we began to massage the plan, come down a little bit, there were some concerns from planning staff, so you'll see what we had done to kind of rectify that. So, in January, we met with Meisner Point. So, if you recall, in that aerial imagery, the project to the west of us is Meisner Point HOA. So, it's a combination of single-family and townhomes, the townhome is directly abut the subject property. So, from there, we did reduce the building, so this was January of this year, reduced the building on the end to four stories. So, again, it was five, six, we brought that down to four and created a step. We brought the total number of units from 110 down to 106, and the parking waiver reduced as well. So, this is what the, this is a graphic depiction of what the prop, project looked like originally. So, you had five and six stories, you were at, from 63 up to 71 feet. There was still a good setback, so we did meet the setback requirements of 100 feet to be able to go that high. That's what the building would have looked like. You can see Meisner Point to your left on the screen. So, as I was discussing, when we brought it down to 106 units, we went to four, five, and six stories, so there was that stepped situation there. So, now we were down at 48, eight, and up to 71 still on the west, or sorry, on the east. So, that's what the building looked like at that time. Through further discussions with the HOA, and also with planning staff, we came down again. So, we brought it down to four stories on the two wings that you saw there, and I'll show you a graphic again, and then five stories on the fur, farthest east portion of the building, which abuts the self-storage. This also brought it down to 106 units, or sorry, from 106 down to 89, and reduced the parking waiver again, which I know staff was, was happy to see that as well. We did some open space reconfiguration and things. So, from our initial start of the application, we were at 110 units, five, six stories, and we came down, 20% reduction in the number of units. So, that was all based on our discussions with the HOA, as well as the, as planning staff. So, the application today, 89 units, four and five stories, and 8% parking waiver. So, here's what we have now, same 100-foot setback easily gets us to that, to that height, so we're in code compliance there, and we're at a 50-story, or sorry, 50-foot height at the four-story building setback there, so. And that's, so, this is just kind of a depiction of what it was, and what we've come down to. So, the townhouses that are immediately abutting us, that are 100-plus away, they're actually at 35 feet. So, we're, we're one story above what they are in terms of massing. So, I think another thing that came up quite extensively in our discussions with the HOA was traffic. Boca Rio Road has some traffic concerns, and, but what we were trying to portray and what we really want to get across today is that the current future land use designation has a much higher traffic generation rate than what we're proposing. So, we're actually proposing to bring that down. So, what I don't think residents understand is, when we're coming to proposed development, they just see, well, you're coming to put new trips on the road, not realizing there's trips already allocated for this land use designation. So, that's what I wanted to pick today. And so, scenario one would be, say we were just to use the CLO, the commercial low office over the whole site, you're at 4,300 trips per day for a medical office. If we were to use scenario two, would be preserve the existing office that's there, and then develop the balance of the site at a max industrial, you're at 953 trips per day, right? So, that's keeping what's there, plus adding industrial, which, again, is already in the, on the books for the land use. We are proposing to do the, the HR-12, this is a total with the professional office and the 89 multifamily units, we're talking about 566 trips, right? So, we're an 870% reduction as, as of today, what's on the books, and a 41% reduction from scenario two, which was the industrial. So, this is, in both cases, any way you slice it, we're reducing the impact on the roadway. And again, our original application was about 500 trips for the multifamily, that's down by almost 100 trips, just in the reductions that we've had through the course of time. I won't go through each of these, but I think it's laid out in the staff report as well, that staff is in agreement with, with our consistency with the comp plan, with the density provisions compatible with surrounding uses, and we're in agreement with the conditions of approval, mainly those are the 25% workforce housing, and that will build, be built on-site. So, we're in agreement with those. And with that, be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
All right. So, for the new commissioners, typically what we do during the questions, I'll go down the line, give everybody an opportunity, this is our time for questions, and then we'll have time for the commissioners to have comments afterwards about the project as well. So, do we have any questions?
Why don't we do staff?
Oh, shit, forgot, sorry. Forgot staff.
Whoops.
Sorry about that. Please strike that from the record. Shoot, I forgot.
All these Lake Worth guys.
Yes. I was so engrossed in this, but I'll probably have some questions for, but if I could have staff give a presentation, welcome.
Travis Goodson is our principal planner.
Yeah, good morning, for the record, Travis Goodson with the Planning Division. So, this is a privately proposed future land use Alice Amendment, known as Boca Raton Commerce Center Three. So, we'll go through this a little bit, it's 4.79 acres located on the west side of Boca Rio Road, just south of Glades Road. They're requesting the commercial low office with an underlying industrial to amend that to commercial low office with an underlying HR-12. There is a concurrent zoning application, as is required with small-scale future land use amendments. The zoning application is a development order amendment to the existing MUPD, a Class A use approval for the workforce housing density bonus and use of TDRs. They, the site plan indicates 89 rental units, and there is an existing 14,986-square-foot office building on the northern portion of the site that will remain. So, in essence, the applicant is requesting to introduce the residential density to this site. From a bigger-picture perspective, when evaluating a future land use amendment application, we take a look at the adjacent and surrounding future land use designations in the area. And in this case, it is primarily residential, directly to the west, and southwest is HR-8 land use designation, MR-5 to the north, HR-8 again to the northwest, and MR-5 across on the north side of Glades Road. There's also commercial node on each of the four cardinal corners at the intersection of Glades Road and Florida's Turnpike. Directly to the west is, or east, is the industrial future land use designation for self-service storage, and then the post office south of the site, and then a little further south, institutional future land use designations. So, wanted to show this one a little as well, just to touch a little bit on height without straying too much into the zoning world. We wanted to take a look at the existing heights of structures in the area, and directly on the subject site to the north is a two-story existing professional office building, directly to the west, our townhomes at two stories. Directly to the east is existing self-service storage facility, and on the same site, there is an active application to reconfigure the site to replace an existing one-story abandoned auto repair place with a three-story self-service storage as well. So, a little bit of a, of a pocket there with some additional increased height in the area. And just another angle, looking at the area where this proposed multifamily building would go, outlined in red, you can see the townhomes in the, on the northern part, upper part of that picture, and the two-story office building, and the self-service storage at three stories in the foreground. So, staff's assessment is that the proposed density is appropriate at this location, it's located in the urban suburban tier, it's in close proximity to employment centers and transit, and the multifamily use is compatible with surrounding residential uses. The applicant is utilizing all available TDRs, which is required for future land use element policy 24B, and the applicant will be providing 22 workforce housing units to add to the county's inventory. Because it's in the urban service area, they are maximizing the use of existing facilities and services, such as water, sewer, fire rescue, and is therefore consistent with applicable comprehensive plan policies. There are four conditions that go along with this, on the future land use side of things, limiting to a maximum of 89 units, that 25% of the total 89 units will be built as on-site workforce housing units, to purchase all available 10 TDRs, again, for consistency with policy 24B, and a limited trip generation for compliance with policy 35D. And with that, staff is recommending approval with conditions, and today's recommended motion would be to recommend approval.
All right, thank you. I think I know where I got the confusion, I see him up here so much, I think he's staff, right? All right. So, real quick, before I go to questions, we, apparently, there were 24 emails that came in yesterday, starting at 11:14 a.m. to about 4:15 p.m. And I want to make sure that the commission has, if they want to take some time to review these, take a quick look at them, they are all opposed. So, I just want to make sure that we have it in record, number one, and number two, give the opportunity for the commission to at least take a look at those emails. Is Erica Jaba?
Yeah, I just wanted to, to add, that's a very important component to it, and thank you for, for bringing that up. Yeah, as of 5:00 p.m. yesterday, we did receive the 24 contacts from the public, all were in opposition to this project, they stated concerns with traffic generation, with, they felt it was incompatible to have the four-to-five-story building in this area, and were concerned about some other things, such as property values and safety. So, I wanted to point that out for sure. And then, since 5:00 p.m. yesterday, I did look at emails this morning, and I have an additional 15 to 20 emails, have not opened them yet, so I don't know opposition or support or what additional comments may be, but we have on record the emails that were submitted before.
Okay. Would the commission like to take a couple of minutes, take a look at that, and when, if you're ready to ask questions, I'm okay with that as well, but there, there's a lot of information in here, and I want to make sure we have all the information so we can, you know, vote properly. So, is it all right if we take it just a couple of minutes, have them review it, and then we'll go to questions?
Yeah, I don't, I don't see any issue with that unless somebody has some questions now.
Is everybody ready?
Ready.
Okay, then we're gonna move right to questions, and like I said, I'm gonna go down the line here for questions for either the applicant or staff?
May I suggest we do public comments, so that you have the public comment before...
There were no, I apologize, there were no public comments.
Oh, okay.
That's why...
Perfect.
Other than the emails, that's how I was talking about the emails during public comments. So, the public comments, we just want to make sure the emails are in record, please.
They are in the record, yes.
Now, let me ask you a question, though, the emails that were sent today, how does that?
Yeah, so...
We're not, we're not gonna see?
Yeah, those will, would move forward to the Board of County Commissioners packet.
Okay, great.
Yeah, unfortunately, you know, we just have limited time for prepping the additional correspondence.
Oh, absolutely, thank you. Okay, so I'm gonna start down here with one of our newer members, newest member, right? Kara, any questions?
Just one question, in regards to condition number four, is that limitation for the entire site, or just for the new development limitation on trips?
That's a condition that applies to the entire 4.79 acre site.
Okay, thank you.
Great, thank you. Selena, any questions?
Yep, actually, and, thank you very much, may I? And, because I do need that visual up there. So, thank you very much to the applicant for listening to the concerns that the residents had, everyone's concerned about traffic and overdevelopment as we're going through this process. So, thank you for reconfiguring. Question is, the unit sizes, are they, what's the smallest square footage of a, of one of the 89 units? Roughly, or can you tell me the unit sizes? I'm sure they vary, one bedroom to...
Yeah, about 700 to 800 would be the smallest.
Okay, and are those designated for certain areas? So, for instance, is workforce housing those units, are they, is there an option? And what do they go up to? So, I'm assuming it was one, two, and three bedrooms?
One, two, and three, yes.
Okay, and then what's the largest three-bedroom?
Roughly 1,500 square feet is, would be the largest. And we do have, the, the mix has changed a bit as we've lowered the, the amount of units. So, we've gotten more three, because we think more families will probably be interested in these units. There's not a lot of new stock in this part of the county, and specifically not a lot of workforce housing stock. So, we think it's gonna be a successful project out there, and, but yes, roughly, so probably 700, 800 up to 1,500 square feet.
Okay, and there are no studio apartments in there?
No.
Okay, and then, my other question is, because of the traffic flow, and, and that is a large concern, and that, and it is only the one lane in either direction as they go through, so is the thought for that, for the residents of there to come out to the south and then go in, or are they disturbing the residents to their west as to their egress and...
Yeah, so, that was one thing that we always thought was interesting, that the Meisner HOA, and maybe I have the, do you have the pointer?
The pointer.
Maybe just to show the laser, do you push the middle button? So, so this is Vio Ancho, is, there's actually a, a signalized intersection here, right? So, our access is almost a quarter-mile north, and we have, this is, this is a one-way in, one-way out, it's, it, everything is contained, self-contained in the site, and then you come back out here. All the traffic for Meisner Point is all through Vio Ancho into a signalized intersection. So, we have no, there's no cross-pollination there whatsoever.
Okay.
Their concern, and again, when we've met with them multiple times now, their concern is, I don't think it is, it's even with our project. They just, Boca Rio is over, I wouldn't say it's overcapacity, but it's, it gets clogged in, in the morning and in the afternoon, and, and I think they just have an overall gripe about the traffic on Boca Rio. So, I think they're worried just anything coming in there would, would cause them more heartburn.
Sure.
But, we, we will not be, you know, in any way affecting their, their intersection or their ability to get in and out from their neighborhood. They have one, one access point here, and they're also sharing that with the, with the post office and these industrial sites here, those, they have access to Vio Ancho, but we, we will not be co-mingling our traffic.
Okay, and then because of the number of units, it, does it warrant a controlled intersection, or will there be one there?
No, it does not warrant a signal there, no.
Okay, it doesn't warrant it, so, and there's no thought, because that is a very, it's very difficult to get in there, and the intersection just to the north is extremely difficult. So, that's why I just wanted to make sure that safety concerns are mediated for that. Okay. I think that was all I had, thank you, sir.
Great, thank you. Rafael, any questions?
Yes, good morning, everyone. Regarding the separation between Meisner Point and the proposed development site, it appears there's a pretty robust landscape buffer there. Is that, that'll remain, I assume, or...
Yes, so, so their existing buffer is mature oaks and palms, and, and it's probably, I would say it's up to their roof peaks, so they're at about 30, 35 feet is what that buffer, so that will all remain, and then we will have a buffer on our side as well. And then, again, as you saw in the, we're, we're set back an additional 100 feet from that.
Sure, yeah. Yeah, I consulted with my good friend Google Earth, and it does look like a substantial amount of landscaping of, of greenery there. And, at the ground level, what is the separation between the two properties? Is it a, is it a fence, a wall, is it just...
It's a fence.
A fence, right.
We, we had talked about that with the community, and because it's, it's kind of infused now in the landscape, they said, you know, that was good, kind of keep it how it is, so...
Yeah, yeah, and I, I did read through these comments when I, when I arrived, and there were some comments and concerns about safety and other things, but it seems like this project, the proposed site, wouldn't even be visible to the development to the west, right?
Correct, yeah, and, and I know this is more of a zoning thing, but we've actually designed the building so that there's no windows facing into their backyards, the, the stairwells that, you know, emergency access stairwells are facing toward that side. So, we don't, we, we really kind of thought about that as we went through the design, obviously also with their input, but we, we didn't want to be peering into any backyards and things, and, and I don't think that'll be possible, so.
That's it?
That's it.
Great. Verissa, any questions? No questions? Serge?
No.
All right. Rosie, any questions?
No.
Mr. Rick Stopek?
No questions, I've got some comments, I'll save.
Great, thank you. Gary, any questions?
Yes, I have a question, is there a traffic study to go along with this?
Yes, there is.
Okay. The software that you're using, or the manual that you're using, is what, version 11 for your, is that what you're using for your traffic study? Was the traffic study produced by the applicant, or is that something the county looked at?
So, are you referring to the ITE trip?
Yes.
Correct.
All right, so, but who produced the traffic study? Was it the applicant?
The applicant.
Okay. Does your software incorporate in the trips, does it, take into accommodation, Amazon, Uber, UPS, U, United States Post Office, Uber Eats? Uber, UPS, United States Post Office, Uber Eats, garbage trucks, school buses, things of that nature?
Yes, those are existing.
Okay. And what, and when was the last time the software was, was updated?
Well, those are counts that we collected every year. So every year, we collect the counts, and as the project comes, we are inputting the new information in the software. So... To the TPS, TPS database.
And when was last time TPS was updated?
It's, every time that we have a new project, we upgrade the, the database.
Okay. The reason why I'm asking is, I was looking at some of the things, in fact, I looked at one of the projects, and there's a software, and you can go upon from a, like a, from a satellite version, and you look down, and it shows you when the project begins, when the project ends. But that information on the trips was outdated. So, that was why I was kind of wondering what the software, because I understand your software doesn't accommodate everything, there's another additional formula you have to add into it to make it accurate?
I'm not sure I understand.
In other words, your software program, there's some things that are not included. It's a manual, right? You're using manual number, was it V11?
Well, if you are referring in terms of trips, you know, how the land use, or land uses generate trips. So like I said, every time that we have a new proposal, we actually input those information manually. However, in the software, there are like equations related to the ITE trip generation manual that automatically generates the trips.
Okay. Again, I'm, you're the expert, but I've done a lot of reading on it, I'm just trying to understand it, because I'm the new kid on the block, and I'm trying to get up to speed a little bit. I understand California and Florida are unique. We don't have the public transportation system as a Chicago or a city. We're more of a suburban setting. So, there are different software programs that are more accommodating, or more current than what we're using now in the county. I know there's been some subject or some discussion about possibly integrating to what the United States Department of Transportation uses, because some, obviously, it's not a one, one-stop-fits-all situation. So, is that something you guys are looking to update?
I don't really have an answer.
Okay. Does, does the software take into account construction delays for traffic?
No.
Okay. The reason why I'm saying is, when is, you have a proposed widening of Boca Rio Road, correct?
Yes, there, there is plan to widen Boca Rio from a two-lane section to five-lane section, as per the county's five-year road plan.
And that would start what year?
That will be, construction is to commence in 2027.
2027, all right. If a project like this was approved, when would the construction start, and when would the construction end?
Well, I only know the...
Let me rephrase that. For the applicant, when would the project start, and when would the project end?
I would say that probably late, late 2026, and probably a year of construction.
Okay, so maybe simultaneously, we have a widening on a road that's, would you agree is somewhat overburdened in traffic?
To be frank, I think there's already a situation on Boca Rio, and the inclusion of the development is not really going to make that more detrimental, because according to the traffic study, their impact will be insignificant.
Okay. Just saying, because I've lived in that area since 1989, are you aware of the, of the cement plant next door?
Yes, I am aware of that.
And that they have sometimes seven, 10, 15 of those cement trucks, and then parked down the middle of the road. Are you aware of the flatbed trucks that are parked in the median, sometimes two, three, four of them at a time?
I am not aware of that.
Okay, that, I'm just seeing if we're on the same page. So, if we're looking at anywhere from 905, 66 trips, now the, the property adjacent to it, which is vacant, where they want to put more, they're going to build something there, maybe possibly another storage area. That's part of that 3,700 or 3,800 trips that could accommodate the whole parcel?
Well, I'm not sure I can answer this question, because at this point, it is purely subjective.
Okay. So, in the morning, what is the traffic flow that you see on Boca Rio Road in peak, in morning, and in the evening?
Well, I have the information for the evening, because that is more conservative. The evening, we have about 772 vehicles per hour direction.
770 in one direction?
Yes.
Okay, and what direction is that? I'm saying, I would assume, well, let me, let me help you out, because obviously, traffic comes, it moves in two directions there, we agree on, right?
Right.
It's moving north and south, right?
Right.
Okay, so...
I can look into that right now.
Okay, so we, yeah, please.
Just share with me for a second.
Okay, while he's looking at, did you have any other questions, Gary?
Yeah.
You have another question?
Yes.
Well, go ahead, he's, go ahead with the other question, then he'll come back when he's ready for it.
All right, you know what, let me just do this, and I'll save her comments, how's that?
Okay.
All right.
Sounds good. All right, are there any other questions?
I'm, I'm ready.
Okay, go ahead.
It's southbound direction.
Southbound, so people are going, normally, I guess they're going back towards Broward, you're saying Broward and Miami, and then I assume in the morning, you have just the opposite situation.
Well, in, in the morning, we have, yes, northbound direction, 725.
725, per hour?
North, northbound, in the morning.
Okay, when you say northbound in a given time period, correct?
That's, yeah, around the morning, I'll say between 7:00 to 9:00.
Between 7:00 and what?
7:00 to 9:00.
7:00 to 9:00, okay, thank you.
No problem.
All right, any other questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And along those lines, then, I believe all the other controlled intersections will, then the timing will adjust based on the traffic flow, once that starts to, correct?
I'm sorry, could you repeat the question?
So, once the project is completed, and residents are now occupying that, is that the controlled intersections around the area, will the timing be adjusted based on the traffic flow? So, where, what, timing now is not going to be the timing at the end of 2028, or when the project's completed and filled, correct?
Well, some, somehow is the truth, because there are like detector loops, those actually automatically telling which floor needs attention, I mean, which direction needs more attention, yeah.
Okay. If no other questions, I'll go to comments. I'll continue down this way, go back down. Kara, any comments?
Sure, no, just going through the staff report, I had a lot of questions that came up, but you answered them in the staff report as I went through, so I really appreciate that. You kind of addressed all of the issues I had in relation to the workforce housing. And overall, like when you're looking at land use, you're looking at, you know, maximum density potential, when you're looking at these traffic numbers. You're not approving a development here, you're, you're changing land use. And so you're assessing, here's what maximum development potential is for what we have, and here's what it would be. You're not approving that maximum development potential, and putting that, those on the road. That comes through the site planning process. So, I thought it was well-written, and you answered all my questions, so I appreciate it. Thanks.
Thank you. Selena?
Thank you very much, and thank you again for looking into consideration. I think concern that we have throughout the entire county is the amount of development, the amount of residents that are moving into the area on a daily basis, and how this is impacting us. We're very used to being how we're comfortable in our current situation, and I think any change is very difficult. I did look through the majority of the emails that came through, and it is the, the common sentiment of the traffic flow, the overpopulation, the continued growth in that. It's a vacant lot that's now going to be occupied by 90 families with multiple people in each one. So my concern is always the size of the unit, because how many are you putting in there, versus the limited amount of space that you have. So, thank you very much for lowering the height that you had on there. I do understand the concerns that the residents to the west do have, but I do appreciate the fact that there is the coverage over there and the landscaping to help mediate that. And thank you for taking into consideration the fact of not having windows that look towards the west. From somebody who has windows on the west when the sun sets, not only do you save on the air conditioning, but I think the privacy is a factor as well. So, thank you.
Thank you. Raphael?
Yeah, I think it's a smartly-designed project. I think it is the best possible context for the site, and I think it's a, it's a good idea. I think it's going to work well there.
Thank you. Verissa, any comments?
I, I agree with Raphael's sentiments. I think that you really obviously put a significant amount of thought into the design with not having the windows and additional features that you added. So, that part is, at least, to be appreciated. The traffic concerns are obviously something that the residents have, and I hope that there's a way to address that. Thank you.
Serge?
Yes, the only concern that I really have for this project is, in the, in the staff report, it talks about the response time for fire rescue, and I think it's, it's 7:30, and I think that's a lot of time to receive assistance. So, that's my only concern about the project.
Thank you. Rosie?
My concern about the project was in reference to the impact in the schools. And what I saw in the report, that it said that there will be an impact. However, it sounds like you are providing some funds so that the schools can address that impact, so that I think is good. I think that you might want to consider more funds, from what I understand, it's around $27,000. So I recommend that you consider providing more fund to the district. In addition to that, I think that you consider, you lower the, the number of units, you consider, and I appreciate you explaining to us the traffic in terms of how it's actually not as much traffic. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Rick?
Thank you, Chair. Couple of concerns that I have overall, and we faced this issue in the past, kind of the recent past, actually, on the commission. You know, staff does a tremendous job of applying the rules equally and without, you know, prejudice to, to these projects when they come before them. And they have to analyze the data, have to be consistent, so that there's no, you know, lack of a better word, favoritism from one project versus another. The problem that we get into is that, as a commission, we have to be, we have been, I think, a little more subjective sometimes than objective. But I think that's the basis for the commission to exist, is to add that subjectivity. And we have in the past taken into account concerns of neighboring properties to a large extent. We've had it in Boynton not too long ago, we've had it in Royal Palm over the last couple of years. And, you know, here we have a situation where, I'm surprised, actually, the room's not packed. We've had that in the past, where we've had, you know, 50, 60, you know, neighbors and concerned citizens that would come and speak. But here, we've got at least, you know, what, 25 or so opposed, nothing in favor of. I'm going to go off and assume that the 15 emails you haven't opened up are probably opposing as well. That's a fairly high percentage of the adjacent property that has, you know, that has an issue. So, I, I don't think we can turn a blind eye to the compatibility issue, and just not take it into account. I also share the traffic concerns, the best-laid plans of Boca Rio Road, having traversed it, you know, as little as possible, because it's a pain in the ass, to be quite frank. But it's the only way to go between there and, and Palmetto, unless you go back to, you know, Jog, or go out to 441. So, it's, even if that starts in 2028, 2029, you know, that'll be just beyond a nightmare. I mean, that's going to be a beyond-a-nightmare project, but at some point, it's going to have to be tackled. And that does impact the fire rescue, and even in its current state. I know when we had some of these other issues come up before us in the past, I think fire rescue sweet spot is right around 7:00 minutes, if I'm not mistaken. You know, you start getting past that, it becomes, you know, a, you know, life-saving issues. And, you know, we're talking about residents now, not, you know, 24 hours a day potentially, versus just, you know, businesses during the course of the business day. So, when I take everything into account, I think it's an excellent project. I think the project has a lot of merits, but this is just another one of those where I just don't know if it's the square peg fitting into a round hole, and if it's a project that, that can fly in this particular location, when you look at the totality of all of the circumstances that are occurring. So, those, those are my comments.
Thank you. Gary, any comments?
Yes, you know, it's interesting, everyone's talking about fire rescue. And I happened to do a little research on that. So, 7:00 minutes is the response time that everyone was talking about. If you have what they call time since ignition, when you have a fire in a residential property or any location, the flashover threshold is 8 minutes. If they don't get there in that first 8 minutes, if you look at a graph, it's like a hockey stick. That property can, can go up and be lost, and lives lost. 911 is another one. If you have, God forbid, an active shooter, a domestic issue, every minute or two minutes is, can be life-saving. So, if we look at what's going on, and what the causes could be, let's talk about, if you get a phone call, for trauma. Now, the trauma centers, as I understand, is Delray Medical Center, not West Boca Medical Center, which is the closer one. And there's one, I believe, St. Mary's, which is way out of the equation. So, if somebody calls, the first thing that happens, and it'll go through the process, is it takes 2 minutes to dispatch. I'm going to look at 2 scenarios. One is West Boca Hospital, and the other one is St. Mary's. 911 gets the phone call. 2 minutes has gone by. Travel time, 7 minutes. They arrive at the scene. 8 to 9 minutes now. If it's not trauma, it's 8 minutes. If it's trauma, it's at least 9 minutes. And you say, well, why is it 9 minutes? Because they have to do more to prepare it. One is a quick stop, let's get them in like a mashing it. The 9 minutes, hey, we got to send them up to the trauma center, which is Delray Medical Center, which is a further distance. Transport time, with some delay factors, because let's talk about that in a minute, would be 13 minutes to West Boca, another 13 minutes, 20 minutes if it's trauma. And then what we call hospital handoff. West Boca, another 7 minutes, another 12 minutes. So total time for somebody, now let's look at, there's 2 different populations. If you're 55 and above, which I'm a representative of, my survival time is cut down considerably, even getting to West Boca. If I got to make it to, if they got to send me to Delray, they better have the coroner waiting for me. This is for stroke or for heart attack. Now, this is not your fault, sir. This is what's been going on. You know, there's a movie that I like to quote, "Everything Everywhere All at Once." Well, what's coming up is, you kind of look at, just like you were talking about, I bet Rick was talking about, all the different things that are going on. There are new developments that only 10% or 15% even people have moved in. The Lennars up on, on Lyons Road near Glades, that's going to impact traffic. Lyons Road widening is from 2027 to 2033. Lyons Road widening is from 2027 to 2033. It's a 10-year project. The first five years goes from Glades, right, you're my traffic guy, right, from Glades all the way to Palmetto. We already know, we discussed what's going on there. There's industrial, you have those other businesses along that way. Then, from Palmetto Park to Southwest 18th, we have more, another five years of construction to continue. Is that correct? Just, I'm just asking you, right? So we've got a 10-year project for Boca Río Road?
Well, the segment south of Palmetto.
Yes.
This is currently under assessment.
Okay. So, and just to talk about this, so it's a 10-year project. You're saying 27 maybe, but anyway, for 10 years, this is going to be going on. So you have the first section of it, then you have the second section. It's still going to back up traffic. So for fire rescue, for police response, for just every day, not to, not to, not include the fact that there's lost productivity, people are sitting in traffic all this time. So, and on top of that, I don't want to bring it in, but I'm just going to have to mention it, Lenar's putting to put 700, shoehorn 762 units in Boca Lago. So then there's more traffic. So you have all of these things impacting, Boca Río Road is a bit pregnant, and I think it's looking to give birth to triplets at this point. Not to mention, you know, delays with the fact that we live in a hurricane zone and other issues. So this is, to me, is an issue. On top of that, if you increase density, which you have more cars and you have more residences, that's going to also impact insurance rates, anywhere from 5% to 12%, depending how close you are to ground zero. So when you add all of these factors together, it is, it's hard on the environment, but the residents, and that's why I consider the people at Meisner, and I'm reading this, I know you met with them, but I know, I don't know who you met with, but West Boca Council, which represents 125,000 residents in the area, they're opposed, and I can understand for the residents. So there are many factors that have to be taken a look at. So in that point, to me, I feel for the residents, and I'll, you know, just to let you know, I guess so subjective, I lived in that area since 1989. I try to avoid Boca Río Road. If I have to go to the turnpike, I'll go down to the Sawgrass if I got to go out, because I don't want to sit there. That delays my trip 10 minutes, just on normal traffic, let alone, I can't imagine what's happening. On top of that, it's like a bad sandwich. So to the east, we have Boca Río Road, and to the west, we have Lyons Road. Now, Lyons Road is set for design, I think, 2028, for the expansion from Palmetto Park Road to Southwest 18th. I think 2028, 2029 is for that design?
For design.
Okay. And then that, so basically, what you're going to have is Lyons Road at the top, Boca Río at the bottom, you have 762 units, and you have this other one. So we look at that whole area, Glades Road is a mess, because we have the Lenars now that are, have been recently put in, and so, and now we look at the high school, and I think high school is overcapacity. So this is a very concerning issue. So thank you for listening.
Thank you. All right. My only comment this time, I think it's, appreciate you lowering the density, I think it's a right project for the right area, and I'm sure the traffic will, you know, there's traffic everywhere, I mean, in my opinion, Palm Beach County. We live here, there's, when you, for me, I've lived here all my life, and I understand that there's construction for the growth, but we need housing. I was talking to somebody recently, and they said the biggest problem they're having getting companies to come here is the housing. So appreciate the effort on that. All right, I'm going to open up with any other quick comments?
I have a quick comment. I also serve on the Business Development Board, and that is a huge issue with company recruitment, especially with New York and a potential change in leadership. There is a strong interest now to come to Palm Beach County, and housing is a potential deterrent that keeps some of these businesses back. So when there's an opportunity for housing, I think we should explore it. Also, we need to also consider the fact that there might be more people coming here with the change in leadership, and rent prices, housing prices, because the market's so limited, it's gotten very expensive for us native Palm Beach residents. So we want to make sure that we have access to housing as well, too. But as you said, with traffic, I mean, it's just not, it's just how it is, and it's probably only going to get worse. And we do need to do something countywide to try to make sure that we have the right amount of ventilation and that we're not getting congested. That needs to be done, too. But I don't know if it's limited to just this project, I think it's a countywide issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Rafael?
Mr. Chairman, and I'll be quick, and I completely understand the concerns about traffic and impacts and development that's in or not in context with adjacent uses. But I'll go back to the applicant's presentation, and Mr. Nichols, if I'm correct, by right, as the site is now, there could be 800% more trips assigned, there are 800% more trips assigned to this site.
Currently, yes.
Currently.
Yes.
So however we want to slice this, the proposed development is a significant improvement on potential traffic impacts. And let's just say today, we vote to deny this, and it goes to the commission and they deny it, and then the current owner or someone else comes and develops it to its potential that it is assigned right now, that needs no variance, needs no change. You have 800% more trips on your road. So I say, let's seize the day, and let's get a win, and get what looks like a really good project approved.
All right, thank you. Anything else?
Yes. During Hurricane Wilma, I was tasked by the state to help out, and I worked with them. I went anywhere up from the fairgrounds all the way down here. When you talk about the people and about the traffic, and, you know, it's just more traffic, we just have to live with it. You get your first big hurricane, the people won't, they'll be fleeing here when they see what happens. And as far as people trying to get out, all we're doing is, it's like somebody who's got cardiovascular disease, don't worry about it, keep eating that pizza, have that McDonald's, go to the Golden Arches. All you're doing is you're kicking the can down the road. I agree with your saying, it's, well, it's less, but the problem is, if we don't take somewhat of a forward-looking view of this, all we're doing is adding to the issue. We're also looking at people who can be incurring a minimum of another $1,000. You talk about expense for the car and the house insurance. Insurance is out of control, and there's no way of taming that lion. So if you're looking for emergency evacuation, you're looking at people who, in the demographics, 55-plus, we're really putting lives at risk. And as far as business, I've been to LA, and I've been to New York, and I'm like, how do these people live with this traffic? So all we're doing is we're turning our Palm Beach County into that. If this was 15, 20 years ago, I'd say what you're saying is not a problem. Let's go forward with that. That's not, it's a win. But to me, it's like I said, you've got a guy who's got cardiovascular disease, and all we're doing now is we're helping clog the artery more and more and more with more traffic and more things.
So if I hear you correctly, we should freeze all development in Palm Beach County?
Well, I would say this, there's certain, what I would say to you is, you have to look at every case individually. And if we look at what's going on in Boca, everybody wants to live in paradise. Remember Bert Errington said, "Everybody wants a slice of paradise." I think we have to be a little bit more forward-thinking on these things. I think there are right projects and wrong projects. I'm not against development, but right here, right now, anywhere they can shoehorn a piece of development, that's what seems to be going on. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. With that, I'm going to call it to vote. If we could have a roll call vote, please?
Well, we don't, we don't even have a motion yet, so...
I'm sorry. I thought we did. I apologize. Yeah.
I move...
I got lost with all the comments there.
All right, let's see if I can make this motion correctly. I move approval of this application as presented and with staff recommended conditions.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, I'll call a roll call vote.
Cara Erin Ferris.
Approved, yes.
Verissa Aldaz.
Approved, yes.
Rafael Clemente.
Yes.
Rosie Matos.
Approved, yes.
Rick Stopek.
I have to vote no, I'm sorry.
Gary Brown.
I vote no.
Serge De Haiti.
I vote no.
Selena Semos.
Approved, yes.
John Carr.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, everyone.
Okay, thank you. Six to two. All right. Six, two, yeah. Item?
Five to three.
Six, three, three.
It was six, I believe it was six, three?
Six, three. Three, no, six, seven. No worries.
All right. Next up on the agenda is item A2, paving lady will have a presentation by the applicant.
My name's Kevin McGinley, representing both Hope Evangelical Lutheran Church...
Hold that microphone up, I can hear you a little better. Thank you.
Yeah, you'll carry me out on a stretcher if I bend that long. Both Hope Evangelical Lutheran Church and the paving lady, they entered an agreement, the paving lady did, to purchase the property such that Hope Evangelical Lutheran Church could move to another location. I've been working with the church for quite a while. They can't fit what their future plans are for this, for this property, so they needed to relocate. And along came the paving lady, and they made a deal that was, that was in benefit for both of them. So we are taking a piece of property that was initially developed as a church over 60 years ago, and it's in the heart of what is now the industrial area of Palm Beach County, which is the Belvedere, Pike, Benoist Farms Road, Southern Boulevard quadrant there. And if you look at the staff report, you can see what, see what other uses are around. Sorry about that. And they're all industrial, with the exception of the Cuban American Club, which our neighbor to the south, which we've been in touch with, and they don't have any objection to what we're doing, and who knows what they're going to be doing in the future. So the application before you today is to change the land use from the institutional residential to industrial to support the paving ladies, corporate offices, and some dispatch. They're not doing any mixing of asphalt, concrete on the property, that's not what they do on the property. They'll go to a site, and then they'll resurface or build parking areas and things along those lines, roads and things. But there's not that type of manufacturing or industrial use going on in the property. So it's fairly simple, as far as I'm concerned. We don't, we don't have no, excuse me, we don't have any opposition that I'm aware of. Every neighbor that we have is an industrial use, again, with the exception of the Cuban American Club, and we ask for your support today, and be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you. We'll have staff presentation, please.
Yes, Alondra will be doing the presentation for staff.
Great, thank you.
I can move.
Good morning, commissioners. I'm Alondra Lopez Mojica with the Planning Division, and the amendment before you today is the paving lady small-scale amendment. So this is a 4.28 acre site, which is outlined in red, and it is located in the urban suburban tier on the southeast corner of Belvedere Road and Pike Road. The subject site currently serves as a place of worship known as Hope Evangelical Lutheran Church and has an institutional future land use designation. The contract purchaser is an asphalt paving and maintenance company known as The Paving Lady. The applicant is requesting a future land use change to industrial in order to convert the two existing structures into offices, as well as constructing 5,000 square feet of warehouse and providing an area for outdoor contractor storage. The concurrent zoning application proposes an official zoning map amendment to allow for a rezoning from the multifamily residential zoning district to the light industrial zoning district. As the map on screen shows, the subject site, again outlined in red, is located along a corridor with predominantly industrial future land use designations on the south side. In addition, there is a variety of future land uses located north of the subject site, including medium and high residential as well as institutional. This site has not been subject of a land use amendment. However, there have been a few amendments to the future land use atlas south of the subject site that have changed to industrial. The site is located within a predominantly industrial area and is one of the four main industrial areas within unincorporated county. The amendment would allow for light industrial uses, which have a lower trip generation than the maximum potential of institutional uses. Considering the low impact of the proposed use and the industrial nature of the corridor, the amendment change to industrial is compatible with the surrounding uses. Staff has assessed that the proposed amendment is consistent with comprehensive plan policies and meets all level of service standards. Staff is recommending approval with a motion to approve. And that concludes my presentation. Thank you.
All right, thank you. We had, I didn't see any comment cards or emails on this one, so I'm going to move to questions, and I'm going to start down this side this time. Gary, any questions for the applicant or the staff?
No questions, thank you.
Thank you, Rick. I wasn't saying, "Thank you, Rick," like you were finished. I was saying, "Thank you," just Gary next. Rosie?
No questions.
Thank you. Serge?
No questions.
No.
No questions. I'm just going to go right down the line here. I do have one question. On the warehouse, because I noticed that there is a drainage retention pond there, I believe on the property itself, will there be hazardous materials being stored there?
No, no, sir.
Okay, thank you. No further questions from me. Rafael? Selena?
Thanks. Actually, my question is regarding the storage that's going to be used there. So on that road, you can see quite a bit, like the recycling plant is there and the view, and you have residential on one side. So do you, further down, it's not all on Belvedere, not right in front of your area, but there is along those lines. What impact is that going, or how are we going to be able to see, if we're traveling on Belvedere, if we're turning on Pike, that are we going to be able to see all of that, or is that tucked away back on the back end of the property, on the southern part of the property?
The, right now, there are two structures on the property. The church itself, which is going to remain and going to be retrofitted for offices, cubicles and dispatch and things along those lines. Then there is a small building, as you come in off of Pike Road, that was used for the pastor's residence in the past. It's basically a residential. They're going to do the same thing at that and make that the executive offices. The warehouse is proposed on the south side as you approach the back end portion of the Cuban American Club. And that you won't see from, from either Pike Road or Belvedere Road. If you're familiar with the zoning division, which we'll go to next with our site plan and all, the landscape requirements that the county has, you're lucky to see many buildings by the time they're built. Same with signage. We don't need it, we're a destination for employees. It's not the type of business where people come and go and, you know, look to buy something or order something. It's self-contained.
There is enough parking then for when there is worship and when employees come through?
Right. Now, that parking lot will be totally redone.
Okay.
Fortunately, the paving lady's in that business, so that's not a concern of theirs. Same with the realignment of a driveway off of Pike Road. One of the issues that we had, if I just go on, that really was an impediment for the church's future plans was the access of Pike Road and the proximity to that access to Belvedere Road. Trying to get cars to come in and drop off a school up Pike Road from the south, or quick turn in and a quick left-hand turn, there just wasn't any room for it. And Belvedere Road didn't accommodate it either. So all of that went into consideration for the church to relocate. So, all of that went into consideration for the church to relocate. But I know I got off tangent a little bit, sorry.
Thank you. All right. Any questions?
I don't have, no questions, thank you.
All right. Any further comments from commission? No? Okay, if not, I'll entertain a motion.
I would like to make the motion to accept staff's recommendation for approval.
Okay, I have a motion.
Second.
Rick, second. Thank you. Any further discussion? Not seeing any. We'll go ahead and move forward with a roll call vote.
Cara Erin Ferris.
Yes.
Verissa Ladas.
Yes.
Rafael Clemente.
Yes.
Rosie Matos.
Yes.
Rick Stopek.
Yes.
Gary Brown.
Yes.
Serge De Haiti.
Yes.
Selena Samos.
Yes.
John Carr.
Yes.
Motion passes.
I thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Okay, next on our public hearing agenda, number, letter B, one. This is the Pine Ridge PUD, and we'll have a presentation by the applicant, please.
Good morning. My name's John Roach. I'm a certified urban planner with the Gunster Law Firm in West Palm Beach. With me this morning is, representing the property owner, is V. Benassouli from Harbor Group International. We're before you with a future land use atlas amendment to modify a previous condition of approval that was associated with the AHS Pine Ridge PUD. It was contained within ordinance number 2020-023. It currently requires that 100% of the units be built as workforce housing units, and today's application was submitted after extensive meetings with county staff to discuss the changed market conditions since the approval, and we'd certainly like to thank them for their assistance and support of the application. The Pine Ridge PUD is consisting of 11.18 acres. It's on the north side of the Southern Boulevard off ramp to Jog Road. It's approximately 1/4 mile east of Jog. It was constructed in 2022, and it's developed with four multi-story buildings containing a total of 288 residential units. Our application, just want to clarify, is no change in the density, no change in number of units, no change to the physical improvement of the site. It is purely dealing with the condition of approval that I'll talk about here in a second. So, on October 22nd, 2020, the county commission approved the ordinance changing the future land use designation from the property from MR5 to HR12. It was approved using the density bonus with the county's workforce housing program, and therefore, the ordinance before you was approved subject to four conditions. The one that we're going to talk about is condition number three. This is the focus of our application. It holds the unique, excuse me, Pine Ridge, I want to clarify, holds the unique distinction of it is the only development using the county's workforce housing program that allocates 100% of its units towards that restriction. Additionally, the 288 units is the highest number of units restricted for a single project within the county. And today, if you were to develop the property under the program, we would only need to provide 25%, which would be 72 units of workforce housing. The condition of approval provided that there were specific number of units assigned to each area median income category. You can see that four within the 60% to 80%, four within 80% to 100%, and so forth and so on. I'll show a table on the next slide that'll outline that pretty simply. However, since the completion of the development approximately 18 months ago, Pine Ridge has been leasing and attempting to lease in compliance with these conditions and has encountered a number of issues that we'll talk about. Unfortunately, unlike workforce housing programs in other jurisdictions, Pine Ridge did not receive any financial incentives such as county bonds, state financing, or so forth. The financial performance is solely based on the actual market conditions and being able to occupy those units, and that has been problematic. So, here you can see the chart of how the ordinance currently requires the distribution of units, four within the lower categories, and then it puts 94% of the units within the 80% to 140% AMI. However, we've actually, during our attempt to lease out the property and continue to lease the property, we're actually finding that the largest percentage of the potential tenants are being placed or fall within the low area median income category of 60% to 80%, where the workforce housing program associated with it, again, nearly puts everything in the 80% to 140%. As a result of that, in 2024 alone, there was approximately 1,400 potential tenants that had to be turned away because they did not fall within that workforce housing category. Again, we're finding that the majority of the potential tenants are within the low category. So, to address these discrepancies, we find that there's insufficient qualified tenants to satisfy the workforce requirement. This has led to a little bit of financial distress for the property and actually has put the property in the potential for foreclosure, which creates a number of problems because if it were to go into foreclosure, it would actually negate the program entirely, which does not satisfy the objectives of the developer or the county in terms of providing those units. And the recent ability, while we've been able to fill some of the, put some of those excess or prospective tenants into the low restricted units, this isn't necessarily a financially viable option because we're not getting the income to financially sustain the property over the long term. So, our application before you is to redistribute the number of units. It is a proposal to increase the number of low-income units from four to 55, again to better match the current conditions within the market. It would also increase the number of moderate units, that's the 80% to 100% from four to 90 units. We would eliminate the workforce category, which is that broad category of 80% to 140%. But then we would also introduce half of the project as unrestricted, and I'll talk about the benefits of that. And again, I want to emphasize, 50% would still be restricted, and this is still twice as many as what the workforce housing program requires today. By distributing, by balancing out or redistributing the number of units, it provides for long-term sustainability, especially with the introduction of the unrestricted units. It accommodates a wide range of incomes. It fosters a more inclusive community, and it also addresses the occupancy challenges as renting more than 55 units in the low category would otherwise create a financial distress that, you know, creates problems with maintenance and so forth over the long term. And again, this will still allow Pine Ridge to maintain the largest number of workforce housing units within a single project within the county. So, this is the, how we would officially change the ordinance. The strike through underlying just reflects what I had shown on the previous slide within the table, again, increasing the number of low and moderate, eliminating the workforce, and adding the unrestricted units. This comes with a number of benefits that I've kind of hinted on already. One, it'll increase the community impact. We can serve a larger portion of the community's workforce that truly needs the housing, and based upon our market conditions we've identified within that low category. This has a positive social impact and supports the county's goals in terms of affordable housing. It increases or improves financial stability. It has the fair market units, which will provide the financial stability to maintain the workforce housing program units. This changes, this changes essentially to stabilize the occupancy levels as well as the financial stability of the project, and a majority of the qualified traffic still falls within that low category and allows us to meet the market needs. It'll prevent the distressed property from falling into that potential foreclosure, allow the workforce housing program to continue, and continue to be a valuable asset to the county and the residents who are moving here. So, the amendment before you, it'll allow that continued viability.
Are you almost finished?
Yes, just closing up. And as outlined in the staff report, you know, complies with all of the comprehensive plans, policies, and we appreciate their support and happy to answer any questions.
Great, thank you. Do we have a staff presentation, please?
Yes, Inestef Shchuk is presenting for us.
Thank you.
Good morning. Inestef Shchuk with Planning Division, large-scale amendment in front of you, LGA 2025-023, AHS Pine Ridge. This is a private proposed amendment on 11.18 acre site located on northeast corner of First Street and Southern Boulevard near Jog Road. The site is, probably looks familiar to you, as it was approved recently in 2020 for 288 units. Project has been constructed and leasing since 2023. There is no change proposed to the future land use designation nor to the number of approved and constructed units. The request is to amend condition of approval in ordinance 2020-023 pertaining to the workforce housing obligation of the project. In 2020 amendment, the 2020 amendment changed the future land use designation from medium residential five to high residential 12 units per acre with a set of conditions very unique to this project. Applicant at time of approval voluntarily restricted 288 as workforce housing units. Unlikely is the majority of workforce housing project where required units are equally distributed between four buckets for income categories. This project used an older provision of programs that required more units in moderate and high income categories in order to mitigate concentration on very low and low-income households in the surrounding area. Therefore, the project was limited to just four units in low category and rest in more moderate and middle income categories. In exchange, the project received 80% density bonus. Since the project began leasing in 2023, as applicant stated, the site experienced challenges in renting units. Applicant reports turning away significant number of potential tenants as it has no ability to rent additional units in low category or rent to households below or above workforce housing income ranges. Applicant has indicated that project's occupancy and financial stability has been significantly affected as a result. So, the applicant is proposing to revise condition of approval to allow more units in two lower income categories of the workforce housing program, increasing that number to 245 units, and remove any income restriction for 143 of the units, allowing this to be rented at market rates. Specifically, the proposed amendment will restrict 145 units with 55 units or 19% in a low 60% to 80% AMI, and 90 units or 31% of all units to 80% to 100% of AMI. The remaining 143 units would be able to rent it to households at any income level. This table summarizes the distribution of the required workforce housing units as recorded and as requested. The, this amendment does not change the future land use designation nor the number of approved and constructed units. If the project were seeking development approval today, the project would qualify for 80% density bonus without the mitigating requirement, and it would be typically conditioned to provide 25 units as workforce housing. So, and they request it just doubles the standard recommendation. The request is consistent with applicable policies of comprehensive plan. Staff recommends approval with conditions. Conditions of approval in the ordinance number one, two, and four remain unaltered, and condition of approval number three is modified to restrict 145 units in two lower income categories, 55 in low and 90 units in mode one. This leaves 143 units unrestricted. Recommendation is approval with condition and motion to approve with conditions.
Okay, thank you. I didn't receive any comment cards or emails on this one either, so I'll go back to questions from the commission. We'll start back down here again.
Just interesting, are you looking at your conditions of approval? I'm sure it's, as you're working on this with different projects, and you're kind of seeing effects of what, you know, what's happening in the market, are you looking at how you're conditioning these and, you know, what your true goal is and how you're going to meet that as far as the long range of, in regards to workforce housing?
Yes, we do. For the current application that comes through, this is just unusual because it was approved before, and we'd like to keep it as what was approved unless applicant brings it to our attention. We do work on it, and we try to look at current conditions as well to make sure that we meet the code and the comp plan as well as accommodate the emerging trends or market.
And in regards to your housing department, they're looking at these trends as well, and they're, did you coordinate with them as far as what the demands are and whether or not what the applicant is saying is accurate?
Yeah, so, our division monitors the rental, the for-sale products, and monitoring is done by Housing Economic Development. However, we do coordinate on big issues with them as well as ongoing with the workforce housing program, yes.
Thank you.
Yes, they maintain all the information as well as according to. Maria?
Did you have a comment on that?
Yes, through the chair, if I may. Maria Bella with the Planning Division, work with the workforce housing program. To your, to add to what Tui said, we are bound, when projects are in process or through the amendment process, to work with the requirements of the code and are obviously not going to recommend a condition of approval that would be in violation of what the code would require for a project. However, systemically, we are looking at the workforce housing program and working with Housing and Economic Development as well as county administration to determine if trends and changes in market conditions merit some changes to the program fundamentally. For example, there are often concerns that even our lowest income category is too high, and there's been discussion about shifting those down, adding a lower category, removing the highest categories, which currently are essentially at market rate. So, not on specific projects, but as a policy analysis of the program as a whole, we do.
Thank you.
Any further questions?
No.
Selena?
So, point of clarification, just so, the issue is, is that there's a portion of, it's all workforce housing. There's a portion where it's, we're able to rent in that, those units. However, there's some that are set aside at a different level that are being unable to be rented. And then the request is to have 145 units under workforce housing, 143 under unrestricted, which means anybody can rent them. Okay, so, considering that our previous agenda item just talked about housing concerns, and I know you don't know this because you're not the leaser as far as where your tenants are coming from, where they're working. So, the question is, are, is that an area that's viable for workforce housing? Because there are certainly people who are looking for housing that fall into that category, but they're not coming to you. So, is it, the location is not correct? Because we do have people that need housing. And then my other concern is, is that now you're going to do almost a 50-50 split as far as unrestricted versus workforce housing, but yet we talk about building more units for workforce housing.
I would actually clarify that the demand has been the greatest in the lowest category, but the way the previous approval was, is that's where it actually put the fewest number of restricted units. It put the bulk of the restriction at the higher end of the AMI, which, that's not the market that we're experiencing right now. Most of those that they are receiving, most of the potential tenants that they are vetting, fall into that lower category. So, that's the reason we want to increase the percentage into those two lower income categories. And then to offset that and to ensure the financial stability of the project is to introduce the market rate units that will allow for, not only financially, but also from a community sustainability, you know, perspective of having those mix of incomes within there.
And it, I'm very familiar with the property, so as far as location and easy access to transportation and everything is all there. The concern that I have, though, is going to almost half the units as unrestricted, meaning that now when we do have those people that need to... meaning that now when we do have those people that need to have housing that fall into a category, and I understand maybe increasing that one a little bit more, that there is somewhere for them to go so that we're not constantly building more places in order for them to go when we have empty units. So it's not necessarily a workforce housing concern as a housing concern.
So I was just going to add that if this project was coming in today, like Ina mentioned, the requirement for workforce housing would be 25%, however, they're, they will be, yes, they're going down from 100 to 50%, but that's still way more than would typically be required for this project.
I understand. I think I would have preferred it a little bit more as the workforce side versus, so instead of almost a 50-50 split, maybe doing it a little bit more 60-40 instead.
Okay. Any other questions? Rafael, any questions?
More comment. I, I think that this proposed change is in many ways, regardless of the economics of the project itself and whether or not they can lease those units or, you know, to propose to prospective tenants, is it is in a way righting or wrong because I have some strong feelings about concentrating low income tenancy in one property or in one district. Plenty of data says that doesn't benefit anyone. So this is in a way sort of balancing things out. And then speaking, it seems like we're all taking this opportunity to speak to the bigger issue here. And yes, Palm Beach County is facing a crisis, right? And, and the way we get out of that, for those in, out there in TV land, I think everybody in the room knows this, is land use, zoning and transportation. And density is a piece of this, mixed use development is a piece of this. And I, I would bet that more and more, as we sit up here at this dais, we're going to see some Rubik's cubes coming at us of really challenging things that we're going to have to deal with. But this project seems to get at one of those solutions, and that's mixed, mixed income in one, in one site.
Thank you. I have a question. I'm not sure if it's for, it's probably for the applicant here. You currently have tenants in there now, right? You have some, there's some rented, is that correct? And I don't really care about the number. I just want to know if there are.
Yes.
Is there occupancy there, right?
Yes.
So what's going to happen to them if there's going to be zero at that workforce, what they're in there at? What will happen to their rent once this is approved, if it gets approved? Yeah, you can, you can bump them up. They can move.
Would you just be able to repeat the question one more time?
Sure. So what I'm trying to figure out, there's people in there now that are paying X amount dollars based on where it's at with it being 288 units. When you, this approval would be that you have zero at that level, correct? At that same amount of number. So what would happen to those people that are in there now that qualified for that? What happens to them?
So right now, the way that it worked was that prior to us getting in touch with the county and everything, we were at like around 70% occupancy with the previous, with the previous provisions. So those, those residents will be able to stay, you know, those are not the ones that are going to be this issue that you're discussing over here. The low income, the 60 to 80%, those are the ones that we were recently allowed to bring in, which is what brought up the occupancy. The number that's there right now also will be able to remain there. That number is not going to change. What's going to change is that we'll just be able to rent out those remaining units that are not currently being rented out. So really, there won't be much change going on once this is actually put through.
So to make sure I understand this, so the people that are living there now, except for your normal regular rate increase that they have per year, will they be able to stay in those units? Not 70%. That's a, that's not a great number, but it's also not a bad number. At that 70%, those people staying there, will their rent stay that same or be within a percentage up?
So they will not be increased above the, the generally allowed, you know, when they're renewing and everything. What's going to happen is once, uh, once, once a tenant leaves, then we'll be able to go and we'll be able to.
Absolutely. And I'm all for that, but I think the people that are there now should be protected is kind of what I'm looking for.
Yes, 100%. Yeah.
Okay. And then, that's it. No other questions? I guess I do have a question for staff on this one, but if they do go into foreclosure, they lose the property. They can come back here and now all of a sudden we lose that 50% most likely. Correct?
Correct, although they have a, they were in the process of refinancing and we did a amendment to the documents whereby if they do go into foreclosure, the workforce housing requirements are not extinguished in that event.
Okay, okay. Good to know. Thank you. No further questions for me. Verissa?
No, I don't have any questions.
Thank you. Serge?
No questions.
Rosie?
No questions.
Rick?
No question. Just a quick comment that, you know, with all the difficulty we have in establishing workforce housing, I think we've got to do what we can to maintain the viability of the project. So I would not want to see this go to foreclosure at all. That would be just the complete opposite of our intentions and desires.
Thank you. Gary, any questions?
No comment. Good question. Thank you.
Right. Thank you. All right. Any other further comments?
Well, I mean, I would like to, I, I wouldn't want to see this project go into foreclosure, but I would like to keep the workforce element of the project in there and not remove it. I mean, I see a lot of news reports about firefighters, nurses that aren't able to find affordable housing for them. And this right here creates an opportunity for them to have that. So I don't see what's the, I mean, obviously it's a business decision that you want to make money. But workforce housing is a, a major issue that we have right now, and I would like to see that continue for this project.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Is, just for the process itself, how difficult is it to come in and ask for this? So for instance, can it be a step program up? I understand you want exactly what you want and be done with it, but my, once again, because you're going from 50, you're going to take 50% of workforce housing out. I know you can't fill it, but obviously there are people that are still looking for places. Can it go into a step program where let's do 60-40? And then in the event that as you go through a couple of years from now, we see where we are, where the market is, all this other extra development that's going on, where if you need to, then go back to the 50-50? Because I would like 70-30, but I'm willing to, to compromise.
I mean, unless it's written into the, the, the future land use amendment and specifies that every time we have to, every time we would have to come back and do a future land use amendment. And in addition to that, we're also having to amend the zoning aspect because the zoning ordinance and the site plan and the master plan and everything else reflected the same condition. So we're amending all of those to, you know, accommodate and, and make that market adjustment today. So unless that flexibility is built into the approval, we would have to do that every time.
That's John Security for you, John. Yeah, legally, building that in presents all kinds of problems. We don't like to have self-executing or self-changing comprehensive plan amendments or ordinances. So, and then on top of that, monitoring such a condition would be, I, I mean, I couldn't even begin to fathom how that would, that would be done. So.
I, I understand. It, it's more of a rhetorical question and the fact that, you know, we have these constant conversations over and over and over again. People can't find anywhere to live, yet you have 30% of your complex that is unable to be rented. So that's where I kind of just look back on. Is it that people don't know where to look? Do we not have enough information out there? Is it maybe raising the limits? I understand because there were four units per price level. So to the fact of, do you just raise those levels instead of four units, were they 10 units at each level instead? Because you did have to turn people away that qualified as workforce housing, but you didn't have the units to house them. If that's, if I'm correct in what your presentation was.
Yeah, we had more people, within 2024, we had approximately 1,400 people that we had to turn away because we didn't have the.
Was it zoned?
Yeah, exactly. They didn't fall within to the category that was available. So.
So is it changing the quantity of those in those areas, in those price points instead of just? My concern is, is you're just taking half your units and making them available to anybody who wants to rent them, which is not workforce housing. It's, you know, other income levels.
But in exchange for that, it's, it's putting a substantial larger percentage into that low category, the 60 to 80%, you know, which is where the market is in terms of, you know.
Right. Thank you.
The need.
Go ahead, Karen.
The, the current board of county commissioners percentage is 25% for a project. It feels like this is a, you know, they're coming down, but they're, they're increasing the units for the, for the lower brackets. So it is a give and take. They are doing more than what the county is currently requiring by double, but they're trying to make up the balance of the community so that the community can be maintained. So I think it's a, I think it's a win-win and, you know, if you can't sustain what your original approval, this is a good, you're giving us some good numbers in the lower categories with this amendment. So.
I have, so is there a strong demand for the workforce housing in, in your development or in your, in the community there?
Yeah, the demand we're experiencing is for those lower income categories. And that's what, and that's why we're trying to increase the percentage that are attributed to those lower categories. In exchange for that to make, you know, to the point that was just made, you know, having unrestricted units, to talk about Mr. Clemente's, you know, point of having that mix of income ranges and also the financial stability and the ability to maintain the project. So if increasing the, the 30%, if increasing that number to the ones, to the applicants
that are being turned away, would that keep the project going as a, the going concern would be removed?
By putting a, a larger percentage into those lower, those two lower income brackets will allow us to meet the better meat.
While keeping the workforce, the 70% that's already there, but increasing the 30% in the lower brackets, would that remove the going concern issue for this project?
Well, the concern is, is that if we put more into those lower brackets while still maintaining 100% restriction across all the units, the financial viability isn't there.
Well, okay, so this, um, this item is to change it from removing the 100% and making it 50% unrestricted. So if 50% was still at workforce housing and the other 50% was at the lower brackets, would that make the foreclosure issue go away? To make it simple.
I'm not sure if I'm fully understanding, but I, I think the answer is no.
Maybe not. They could be out of money.
Okay.
Okay.
Is that what we're saying or that's what they're saying?
I mean, if you can clarify again.
So right now, you're saying 70% of the occupancy is causing the, the, the project to go into foreclosure, will cause the project to go into foreclosure because you're unable to occupy the 30% with, because there's a lot of applicants in the lower bracket. So you're asking to change it from, remove the 100% and make it 50% unrestricted and make the other 50% with the increase in the lower bracket. So if the 50% was still at workforce housing and the other 50% was increased in the lower brackets instead of having the unrestricted, will the foreclosure issue still be a, a concern to this project?
Yes, it would still be a concern because we're, you're not offsetting, because so many more units would be going into those two lower income categories. There's not the financial, there's not the, the higher rent units to offset the, the impact of that.
So in the planning of this project, when it was 100% workforce housing, what, what was their projections that put this into the, the scenario that could fall into this?
I can't speak to the, the previous approval or the financials behind it. I mean, that was actually before we acquired the, my client acquired the property.
That's all.
And again, it's, it's reflecting the market of, you know, what percentage or what area median income potential tenants that we're seeing coming through the door relative to, you know, what we're held to by the, the restriction within the amendment.
All right. I mean, how much was this total project? What was the total investment for this project?
I don't have that answer.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Go ahead. Rosie, go ahead.
Yes.
Then we'll go down to Gary.
Yes, I have a comment. You mentioned that right now you have 70% occupancy and, and you are eliminating the moderate two and the middle. You're basically eliminating those two, right? So my question is, the people that are living there now, are they meeting those requirements? Are they under the moderate and middle? Do you have anyone right now under those there?
Yes, we do. Currently, we have around, I would say, probably in the area of 60 to 70% of the people that are in the, in the development are within that bracket.
Okay. So what that means is that those two categories seem to be categories where people are falling under. So my comment is, wouldn't you, why wouldn't, why, why wouldn't you consider having continuing four units on each of those categories?
How many units? I'm sorry?
Four. Because right now you have four and four, correct? Why wouldn't you consider those two categories in continuing, considering that you have people already there? And I understand that if they stay, that they will continue. But how about if you get new people? Because it sounds like those categories are still categories that people are interested. So I will, my recommendation is to have those eight units included in the, so then, you know, instead of the, I believe it's 140, how many is it that we have restricted right now? Right, zero. But my question is, I think 145, we said, right? So instead of 145, adding eight units to that. So that's my recommendation. Thank you.
Gary?
This is not a tough question. This is a softball coming across the plate. How do you advertise people who are seeking workforce housing? Obviously, you have 1,400 people who were denied or go to one or the other property because they couldn't afford it. But workforce, that's my favorite stat too. How is that, would that for the public to know the availability location?
So I'm not a member of the marketing team, so I'm not, you know, as intimately familiar with it as, as, as I, as maybe you're hoping. However, I think that it's listed on the website and I think that it's made very clear to people that do walk-ins. When they come in to the property, we let them know right at the offset that it's workforce housing. And that's generally how, how, how the word gets around.
Hospitals, schools, things of that nature. There's not like any direct marketing. Because obviously there is a void there. You're not. How is the general public aware? Is that something that's, is this decision is done to find individual apartment building? Or is that something that you guys?
We have it listed as, on, oh, sorry. On economic and housing sustainability and on planning website, we have a list of workforce housing developments. And we have an A B C letters that is units are available for certain projects that are asking us to put that note. And that is in addition to their own marketing efforts.
All right. So just a question. So none of this is advertised to say the county sheriff's office or to the school system or to local hospitals directly? This is something that somebody by word of mouth, you have to go to this website. I'm, I'm just wanting to know. I'm the new kid on the block, so educate me.
There's a county, I'm sorry. Sorry. At, on the county's website, right on the front page, there's a housing portal and that's, lists all the available units that the county has approved. And it directly contact, I mean, connects it to the individual developer or property owners for that. And then on top of that, I guess they can chime in as to where their source of, you know, the marketing, direct marketing to the users. I know there's a, there's a large, you know, sign advertising rental and information as well, but I don't know if, if it points out to whether the, in the different income categories. So that may be too, a little more specific.
Your workforce housing, somebody comes into a business sometimes, how'd you hear about us? What are you hearing?
So again, I'm not really part of the marketing team, so that's more their, their entire area. That's, that's data that they collect. However, from the county website, as was mentioned, from seeing it on our website and also some people just, they see the, the prices that we have and they say this is within our bracket and they happen to also just be within the workforce housing bracket, so it works out for them.
All right. Yes, go ahead, Raphael.
To Rosie's point, which is a good point. Right, so the 100% AMI to 140% AMI, which comprises two of the categories, moderate two and middle income. If the development, if this, if this project already has tenants in those units, is it a reasonable proposal that from the unrestricted units, eight units are carved out and added into restricted, income, income restricted available units? And that becomes part of a condition of approval for this proposal? And, and I, and I'm assuming the concern is, there's people living in these units already and they're counting on staying in these units. Things aren't getting any easier from a housing price perspective. This would at least give those individuals or families the opportunity to renew a lease and stay in place based on something they've already got in hand and not have to go search elsewhere for housing.
And in addition to that, it sounds like if it is a category that there is an interest. So not only for the people that are there now, but if there is in the future an interest, it would be good to have that, those included.
Sure.
So, go ahead, Selena.
Just, a couple of things. So I believe you had asked the question before, Mr. Chair, as far as how many tenants were in those units and were they going to be displaced? And I believe the answer was no, they were not going to be displaced. And that's a question now that's coming up, that wait, there are people in those categories. My other thing that I think might make it a little bit easier is if you look at, instead of going low moderate, moderate two is a dollar amount. So household income, right now you have four units, you want to put them up to 55. So is that household income of $50,000? And then moderate one, where you have the 90 units, is that household income of $100,000? I think if you looked at it that way, because now you're going to go into half the, half, the 50% of the units are going to be unrestricted, which means I could make $200,000 a year and live in there. So I just want to make sure that maybe if we use dollar increments instead of terminology of low moderate, one moderate two, that that might be helpful.
It changes every year.
It changes, but this is what we're, this is what we're going off right now. So they're going off of these numbers and they say, we want to make 145 units between 60 to 100%. Well, are you looking at household income of 50,000 to 100,000 and that's what's going to fall into that category? And right now, they're saying is that they're not going to lease to anybody that's making between 120 to 180,000 dollars a year, but now they're going to start renting 143 units to unrestricted, which means I can make any amount. And I think just that clarification as well. And just going back to the point that, the question that was originally asked was, those people in those moderate two categories that were not going to be displaced, now the question is, are they going to be displaced?
Well, they, they had said no. They stated earlier they would not be displaced.
Correct. And now they're going back and forth saying like, yes, we do have tenants in that category.
From what I understand, they won't be displaced.
No.
But their rent will go up to the unrestricted, correct? The, the ones that are in there in the categories two and three, I believe it was. Those, those people, because they're in that category, will they be, they, they're the same as the workforce, correct? Like their rent's going to go up based on the regular percentages, not to the unrestricted number. I think that's the concern.
The, the bulk of our occupancy is the 100% and below, the lower categories. So, and I believe Staff was going to comment on, when you start getting up into the 100, 120, and this project's unique in the sense that it has 140% AMI, those are really market rate rents that they'll, that they'll be paying. So it would be the same as the, the unrestricted rent level. You know, when you have someone making 120, 140%, they're pretty much paying market rate anyways.
Okay. I guess my only comment, and then I'll go back around one more time. I do believe it's great, I figured the mathematics there, the reason you came up with those numbers, was that's how this will work. This is how you could stay there and maintain it. We just really have to trust that the ones that, once their leases go up, we've got to put faith in, in the owner, because they will be able to, my understanding is, they would be able, if they go into unrestricted, be able to increase it. Right? So we hope that you do say you will go with the regular percentage, but we have no, there's nothing near, it's not even in our purview to, to deal with that. It's just about the land use. So hopefully, you do that, because we don't want to displace those people either. That's my only comment, and if there's any, not any further comments, we'll entertain a motion, unless you had a comment.
Wasn't so much a comment, but going back and forth in this whole conversation was the point before, instead of doing it 50/50 that way, is making it a little bit higher of the, making it with an amendment so that it's not so many units that are unrestricted, was my concern from the beginning.
So, I'm, I'm looking to the attorney, because he might have to correct me on this. We can make a recommendation or a modification, then it has to come back, we have to approve that particular modification, and then if that gets approved, then we can submit. Is that correct?
Uh, I'm utterly confused.
Yeah.
So you, you as the board can make a motion to say, we want, what is it, 150? We want 160 restricted units. We want 100 and whatever. You can do, you can do what you want, right? And then if that get, that will get sent up as a recommendation of this board to the Board of County Commissioners, and then they will do what they feel is, is fit. And it's not going to come back to you.
Okay, but we're changing the way the motion is, so if-
We're changing the, Staff, right?
Correct. We're going to, we want to change that. But don't I have to have a motion to be able to change that?
Of course. You would make, somebody would make the motion, I make the motion to change condition to whatever, right?
If, if I may, we can put the last, those are the conditions of approval that you're looking about, talking about, and really condition three is where you're looking, from what I understand, in terms of adjusting the numbers, you know, if you want to go with Ms. Matos's recommendation, the numbers would change from 145 to 153, adding the eight units. And then the numbers that are going to be unrestricted would go down to 135. Is that what I'm understanding that you are looking to do?
Yes, and I think Raphael may have something here, so.
You want to try? Okay, I, I make a motion to approve this application with amended conditions of approval to add eight units in, can I see that chart one more time? Four and four. I'm so sorry.
It's slide num, it's slide number four?
Correct. To include four units of moderate two and four units of middle income as restricted income units. And the rest of the motion would remain, with the rest of the recommendations would stay as proposed.
And so then the unrestricted would be reduced by a-
Correct. Would be reduced by the-
Also 135, right.
Thank you for guiding us. Easy enough.
Okay, we have a motion.
I second it.
Okay, we have a motion and second. Any further discussion?
The only thing that I see with this is that I, I don't know what the economics is of how it will impact their, their operations to really say what number should be adjusted. That's the only thing that, reservation that I have.
And I, I share that, but it, but also, I mean, the project was approved, developed, and then purchased with these existing conditions by Mr. Roach's client. They are getting the vast majority of what they've asked for today. And we are also here protecting to the, a significant degree, the interests of workforce tenants in our, in our county. I, I mean, this feels like a pretty good outcome that is balancing the economic needs of the project with the housing needs of Palm Beach County citizens.
Okay. If no further discussion, I'll call the motion to roll call vote, please.
Oh, did we have a second? Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Matos. Okay, very good.
Okay. Precious, please.
Kara Erwin Ferris.
I think I'm going to say no, because I would rather support Staff's recommendation.
Verissa Laldas.
Yes.
Raphael Clemente.
Yes.
Rosie Matos.
Yes.
Rick Stopek.
Yes.
Gary Brown.
Yes.
Serge DeHady.
Yes.
Selena Samios.
Yes.
Motion passes eight to one. Oh, I'm sorry, John Carr.
Won't be the first time I'm forgotten. Vote yes. Usually it's when I'm standing in line, though, not usually up here.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. That's all of our public hearing agenda items, then we'll go to updates and comments. Commission members, so we have several new commission, new commissioners on the dais here, so I'd like to go ahead and give them a, you know, a couple of minutes to just tell us a little about yourselves and what district you're serving there. So I'll start down here, ladies first, Kara.
Hi, thank you. Hello, my name is Kara Ferris. I am representing District One. I am a planner. I have been a planner, working for, on the government side, usually sitting on that side of the dais, and looking forward to the opportunity to see things from this side. So, thank you.
Thanks for being here.
Good morning, I'm Selena Samios. I am the Executive Director of the Women's Chamber of Commerce, so we cover the entire Palm Beach County. I am the at-large member, so the county commissioners did all approve to have me here, most of them, I should say. And I spent the last nine years on the, as a councilwoman in Royal Palm Beach, so very familiar with the process and have the love for the Western communities that is being developed quite rapidly. So, thank you.
Great, thank you. And Gary? Might be telling you something.
Yes, no? Okay. Gary Brown, I'm representing District Five, when you can hear me. I live in, in West Boca Raton. I've lived in Palm Beach County since 1989, from, from the Philadelphia suburbs. Go Eagles. Currently, I also serve on the sheriff's advisory in South County. And while I'm retired, my dance card's been filling up pretty quickly with interesting things. I also used to work for the Broward County School Board as a technologist, and I used to teach technology for Nova Southeastern University for graduate students.
Great, thank you. All right, I'll go to our commissioners. Rick, do you have anything, any comments?
No, I'm good. I just hope everybody's having a good summer, and before we turn around, the kids will be back in school, so enjoy the diminished traffic for the next 30 days. Are we meeting in August?
Yes, we are.
Thank you for that.
Sorry. I feel like I'm bringing bad news.
I can tell by the reaction that we will have a full agenda.
Actually, it should be pretty short, but we would greatly appreciate quorums still.
Yep. Rosie?
Just want to say thank you so much for this, to the staff for their hard work. You guys are always working and, and preparing all of these documents for us and all of this research, which we really appreciate.
Thank you. Serge?
Thank you, no comment.
And our new vice chair did a great job timing.
I, I think you might be being a little generous here, but thank you for this opportunity and a great meeting, yeah.
Awesome. Raphael?
No comments. Happy Friday.
All right, great. I don't have any comments either, I gave them earlier. So do we have any comments from our executive director?
Yes, good morning, everyone, and welcome to our newest commissioners. Thank you for being here and serving. We are really appreciative of having your expertise and your knowledge. I think it's been a really great discussion today, and I'm really excited about the, the mix of the board. You guys bring a lot of great insight and background, so thank you very much for that. A lot of the issues that you discussed today, Twee's going to be sharing with you. I'm sure you've heard by now, the Countywide Transportation Master Plan. We're going to be moving forward with that, so I'm going to put it over to her and let her give you some more information on that.
So hot off the press, yesterday, we released a press release on this. There is a, the county has approved a consulting firm. Their name is WSP USA Inc. They are going to be the consultant leading the project. Next week is our kickoff meeting, a public kickoff meeting for all the public to come. You can participate virtually, or you can come here at nine o'clock on Friday the 18th. We will be circulating the press release to the, to the planning commission, as well as all the other interested parties as well. Just as a, as in case, not everybody sees the county's press release or it doesn't get picked up. Usually Friday's not good for press releases, because there's so many events in the weekends, but we're going to share that information with you. There's a link for public participation in the press release. However, if you want to monitor this process, there is a county website, right in the front of the county webpage, there's a link to that. Or you can just go to Google and type in county, Palm Beach County Transportation Master Plan, it'll take you right to that webpage. That webpage will have, is a static page. We hope when the consultant comes on board with all of their public engagement, they'll develop another site that's more interactive. And you can subscribe. We have a lot of exciting things going, so please, you know, put that on your radar. All these questions, you have an opportunity to provide input. So this is the first county-wide plan, where 39 municipalities, transportation experts, as well as members of the public and other stakeholders can get involved. So the first couple of months, we anticipate, will be the public engagement process, and throughout the process, the consultant is required under the contract to have public input at every milestone. So there's four different phases on there, and we'll, please stay tuned and please play engage. Always can ask, call me for any other questions about that.
Great, thank you. Did you have a comment on that, Raphael?
I have a, I do. As many of you may know, I am, an area of interest for me, for a very long time, has been transportation. It's an equity issue, it's an economic issue, it's a quality of life issue. I chair the board of an organization called the West Palm Beach Mobility Coalition, affectionately WPB Go, which is a TMA for our county's urban core of downtown West Palm Beach, with the big goal of getting, shifting the number of people who choose to drive alone to folks choosing options, aside from their single-occupant vehicle. As a member of this body, I'll look to our county attorney and ask the vexing questions that I tend to ask attorneys, including the one I'm married to. Can this body have an opportunity for a workshop on the, this process and the plan for the county-
countywide transportation plan? And I say that, I ask that question, because every project, every proposal that comes before this body, and we saw it today, the common denominator there is traffic. And I think we all have unique perspectives, we've all been asked to serve in this capacity, and I feel like this would be a tremendous opportunity for us to learn and understand what is planned for the future, which would make us more effective here in these seats. And it would also allow us collectively to offer our input on the process. So I know that that's probably all part of a scope that's been agreed to and budgeted on and everything else with the consultant, but if my fellow members here on the dais would like that, I, I would like to ask for that. And I'll leave it to our chairman, not to put you on the spot, but...
Does that go to the attorney or the executive director?
Yeah, I would think that would be more something that the staff would be able to respond to. Legally, I mean, certainly educating the board is, is permissible, so.
And they can workshop an item. Yeah, yeah. So what we anticipate, again, is developing this plan to use as a, it'll be a multimodal plan that has all various forms of transportation. You can provide input as individual. We will probably, the, the timeline of this is a year, so we have our ears coming up as well. So if the board chooses to up some of these policies into the comp plan, that could be, that will be coming before you all as well. But we will have monthly updates, I will have monthly updates to this board at your meetings, so you can, you can state, you know, a rest of everything and have comments. You can also direct to me or to staff, and we'll make sure the consultants will hear that and incorporate that. But due to the limited contractual meetings that they have, they can't obviously visit every single board, but you have a unique opportunity to, you know, to have us report, and then you can give us those comments as well as the board, and we'll make sure that it gets relayed into their plan and to their analysis.
Thank you.
And there'll be different milestones as well, so we'll have monthly meeting updates or monthly documents that you can see where the progress is, and at any time, you can always ask us, and we can share that with the board.
So with that being said, don't want to add any workload, but is there, so we're all busy, you know, we get paid so much to be here. Is there any way, like any, on this specific topic, not everything going on in the county by any means, but is there any way on this specific topic, we could get an email with any of those updates?
Yeah.
I don't expect it on everything, but this specific topic would be greatly appreciated, because, you know, all of us, we work, or some of us are not retired, like the two guys down at the end there. But the, to, to go look for it, I understand, we can, we should. However, it would be a little easier for us and help us if we could get some sort of email when something happens.
What we could do is, you all are on our stakeholders list, so you will get the updates and, and information. I'll make sure that the consultants know to include you on, you know, rather than you going and subscribing to a site, we'll make sure that we'll forward your emails that we have on the record to them.
That would be greatly appreciated. We, we will appreciate it. Is that, is it good, Raphael? Okay, great. All right, anything else? Actually, back to our attorney, we skipped the attorney.
That's fine, I don't have anything else to add.
Yes.
So I like your idea about the workshop, but then of course, I understand you're going to be kind of spoon-feeding stuff monthly, but I like the idea. Maybe as a possibility, we have some type of, we don't have to call it a workshop, we could call it informational, so it's not like an official, but at least it's informative. Maybe do like a Zoom call, so wherever we are, we could listen to this information, because I'm sure a master plan like that has got a lot of content to, to be absorbed and processed, and when we'll be getting this monthly, you know, along with whatever's in writing, maybe that could be an option down the road.
Well, I believe we're already invited to everything that they're doing with this, the master plan. So we're, we're already invited to everything that they're doing, is essentially, am I right?
Yeah.
So we're going to see what's going on, we just need to, so we won't have our own little...
Right.
Workshop for us, because we, we will have access to all the, the master plan because of we're listed as a stakeholder, correct?
Right.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Fair enough.
Yes, so again, there, there are public meetings that will be available for you as,
as a public member to participate. We're going to try to look at as a hybrid, so there'll be question answers, there's interaction, but also, you know, these will be regionally located. So you can come to one, you can come to all of them, anytime, and you can provide as well, comments to me, and I'll make sure it gets to our, to our consultants. But to have a unique workshop at every milestone for this board, it's, it's not going to be feasible with everyone wanting. I have 39 municipalities that want their council members to have special workshop as well, but there will be ample opportunity and interaction and communication with us.
When you said regionally, you mean certain geographical areas in the county?
Yes, yes. There'll be seven for each of the commission district, and then one area-wide. Though, we're going to also work as well, because we're together to, I call it, just to try to make sure that there's no overlapping, so that, you know, for instance, several district has overlapping jurisdiction, so we may end up just having fewer of those in that area, and that will give us more opportunity, more public meetings for, for other areas.
Great, thank you. Anything else from the Planning Director?
No.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Thank you.
Sir.
Good job.
A little bit of a difference.
So what that turned out to be?
A little bit over 50 bucks.
Yeah.